With respect and gratitude for our indigenous neighbors, the Nooksak and Lummy tribes, for their enduring care and protection of our shared lands and waterways. Next up is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Okay. Any changes to the agenda?
Nope, the agenda is good.
Okay, if no changes, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion to approve agenda as written, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I also wanted to note that Ed is present by online. Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, aye.
Give the order.
Yeah, give the order. Earlier this week, our transition students and our high school students from the high school visited Harmony with some of the therapy lamas. So a highlight for both high school students as well as the elementary students. And there was some media there to cover it. So as soon as I hear about that, I'll share it with everyone there. Today was the last day of school, so we had a lot of students celebrating that. Akron was celebrating with a staff versus sixth grade kickball game that I got to go participate in, which was pretty fun. It seemed like it was fun had by all. And yeah, with it being the last day, that's what I've got for good to the order.
Thank you.
That's a staff one. Yeah, fortitude, staff one.
Next up is consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then we have information for powers. And Timmy, do you have this? Let's see, Jeremiah?
Yeah, first.
You will come up and sit in the chair.
Yeah. As a group of ASB students, we met the past two days and I've been talking about pay to play and how it would affect just the overall school in general, as well as if it would just affect sports or also drama and band and choir. And we also met with Coach Lepp today, actually, talking to him about it, seeing what would work best for him and if that would kind of, I guess you could say, meet the standards for what we were hoping for as well. And as we were talking to him, he brought up the idea that, which we all agreed with, and we think it would be probably the best, in our opinion, to do a base fee when you go to do the sport. Instead of charging per sport, you charge one cost overall, and that would also cover the ASB card in the process of paying for the sport. So he thought of the idea of a hundred dollars as a base fee to where you pay a hundred dollars and forty-five of it goes to the ASB card, and the rest of it would go to the pay to play. And that that money would go towards the sports itself because band, choir, and drama have their own set way of doing so, and that the money that they would pay for the ASB card to do that would go towards them in a separate account. We also talked on the subject of possible sponsors, which would be led by the ASB itself in a way where we would find the sponsors for the sports or the activities like drama, and that they would do a payment towards us that we would represent them in the activity. For example, football, we would have a banner posted up on the fence out in front for everybody to see, and that they would sponsor us through that, and that the ASB would be running that. And the money earned from those sponsors would go towards the ASB general account instead of towards the sports themselves. That way, if drama and choir bring in money through that sponsoring, it goes straight back to drama and choir rather than going towards just the sports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing I will clarify, as much as they would like to talk back and forth, public comments, it's a one-way conversation. So my tip will awkward, but that's just the way it goes.
So same thing on part of ASB. We also talked about a few other things among what Jeremiah stated already. We also talked about like a season pass for like people who wanted to visit games and like they didn't have to pay every time. They could buy one season's pass in order to keep going and not have to worry about paying every time. We didn't come up with a like final number for that, but it was like a recommendation that someone made. We also had concerns about if it would like how it would affect someone if they got cut from the sport and they did pay to play that sport. So wouldn't we like reimburse them or wouldn't they be able to pay? Would people be able to pay after teams were chosen? Like if someone got cut and then had already paid, what's gonna happen with their money? So those were some of the other things. We. Yeah, I think that's about it. Oh, and ASB would has asked if they could be included in like conversations about pay to play in order to be kept up on that, in order to like actively participate in like the conversation with it. In order to get like the viewpoints of other people and the students who actually go to school in order to see what how people feel about what's gonna happen in the future. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all signed. If anyone else would like to address the board, welcome to. If not, thank you so much for coming and last, you're taking what could otherwise be the start of your vacation. I we acknowledge and appreciate that. So next up is board comments, I think. Let's see. I'll start with you this time, Jason.
Thank you guys for coming and talking. We've had some, a lot of people with some heart talk about the last few issues and stuff that we've been talking about, and this is what you guys brought really good ideas and thank you on that. What do I have before? Pugil livestock show, I went down with the FFA and spent the weekend with them in Mount Vernon at the fairgrounds. That went really good. We had a couple, two champion contenders and went really good. I think nine, nine or eleven kids ended up going. Some didn't make weight, so they're gonna do Linden. The thing that was pretty awesome about the Baker kids is we had a lot of people that didn't even have pigs go that either didn't make weight or they just didn't show them this year and came down and helped and camped and gave whatever really big helps. And that was pretty awesome to see that. A lot of the schools, you didn't see that extra help, and our kids did. So that was that was really good. And that that's all I got.
Um, yes, thank you for coming, and I think I like a lot of the ideas that you have, and I am curious to hear more about them. And so I'm wondering how we're going to work that into future conversation. As far as deadlines and when they need to happen. I don't have much going on. I can't. Last thing I did is I went to the play. It was so good, but I think so good. And I don't know, decided for summer.
Well, I'll have Ed go next there.
Yeah, thanks. I guess my only comment is I did have some thoughts on the pay to play, but I'll I'll save that for our board discussion. So just want to make sure the students know we're gonna be talking about that in a little more detail later in the meeting here. And that's it.
Thank you.
Log show weekend is coming.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to that thing tomorrow.
Oh, that's right. Yes. And I'll be volunteering to park cars with the, what is it, the baseball, not very youth baseball association. And that's one way that youth, the baseball association gives back to the log show for letting us use their fields for our practices and our games. So you will see many parents, I'll have my parent hat on, out directing you where to park. And thanks to the log show for their support of our student athletics or our elementary kids. And that's not associated with the district, but run by parent volunteers. Nice. Yeah, little community.
Anything else?
No.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, log show weekend. I just texted my my niece because her three-year-old boy loves loud noise. That's a reminder that this was log show weekend. So I attended the Wauken County Superior Court hearing on the Little Lily Timber Sale Appeal. To remind you, the revenue from the Little Lily Timber Sale on state forest land managed by the Department of Natural Resources would provide approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Matt Baker School District. And so it's it's being held up by an appeal by an environmental organization located in Tacoma. The Judge Grockmal is is the judge that the case is assigned to, and I was very impressed with with her. She had studied, obviously read the entire brief, understood it, knew the and 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 had had, you know, a solid background in the law, in the applicable law, so ran a good hearing. DNR was ordered to provide discovery to the plaintiff. They were behind on their schedule there, which they said they could finish. And and key to us is it's my understanding that the judges issued no injunction, which means that 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 there's if 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 that understanding is correct, and that's what I that's what I've been able to gather, the purchaser can can go ahead with things like road building and 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 probably even harvesting. And in other cases where judges did not issue an injunction, the harvesting, the hauling was all complete before the court case was done. So then it becomes a moot court case, which is not a bad outcome for Matt Baker students. Right. So anyway. So that that will be ongoing. The our attorneys prepared a have been working on additional preparations. So that will be ongoing. Matt Baker High School graduation, very sweet. It was just lovely. I don't know if any of you attended, but it was the speeches really, I think exemplified the nature of the class, you know, kindness to others, some of those themes of looking out for, you know, how you can contribute to the community. It was, I thought it was a very beautiful graduation ceremony and and a lot of that is definitely tribute to the senior class because they really were the and and all the staff that has worked since kindergarten to 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 help shape them along with their families and and other experiences. So I thought that was just a wonderful time. Tended to retirement tea here. Nice time to get to get together with retirees and former employees. And then if you haven't checked it out, Nikki sent us pictures of the lamas at Harmony. And and it's it's one picture after the other of kids petting along. It's just really lovely. So look at that. So that's all I had. Next up is board action items and proposed athletic fee schedule memorandum, second reading. So Nick, I'll let you start out with an update and production.
So the wording of the memo has not changed since the first reading, simply because I felt that we were still in a fact finding phase and getting gathering input. Since that time, we did have a community survey open for about a week. And I've shared those results with all of you last Friday. And as we continue to gather more information and input from folks, you know, I think what I will clarify that what I proposed in the memo was simply a conversation starting, a starting point that in no way was that the end all be all, just simply. I think, you know, my personal belief is that no matter the outcome of this process, whether a fee is implemented or not, I think it's important that as leaders of this district, we consider every possible opportunity to ensure sustainability with our operations. So the this process is one that, you know, I know we, a lot of folks are, you know, stretched pretty thin as it is, but I think it's important that we look at every possible avenue we can. So that's the update I have so far on this. But again, you guys have the the survey results that I shared on Friday.
Well, I think what I'll do is go around the room, but because you're online and I don't want to forget you, Ed, if you'd like to start out in terms of comments or questions.
Sure. I guess I'll I'll just start with the survey results that I see here. So we had fifty-four responses. Nineteen strongly supported, twelve somewhat supported, three were neutral, four somewhat opposed, sixteen strongly opposed. Of the ones that supported it, there was a pretty common caveat that they wanted to make sure there was waivers for for low-income families. And also wanted to make sure that there's clear communication in multiple languages regarding the waivers as needed. There seemed to be some confusion about whether it was two hundred dollars per student or per family. So I think that needs to be made super clear. People ask for flexible payment plans. One critical comment, you know, is just calling out the fact that we have a thirty-plus million dollar budget and how much of a difference does five to ten grand make? And that's a, it's a legitimate question. I mean, I guess all I can say is, you know, a lot of our expenses are fixed with contracts and other things. So, you know, every dollar matters. And, you know, like Nick said, I think we're just trying to look at every avenue here to make sure that we have funding for things like referees and other things like that. Also, we were asked to look at things like fundraising, sponsorships, donations. Those are all things that we can look at. And we should look at. And just, you know, listening to our students tonight that came in, it does seem like there are some questions, and I don't know how this gets sorted out. You know, we just, I think we want to make sure that the fees actually get to the athletes in a in a in a fund. You know, there's got to be a path for that. You know, there's interest in students that maybe aren't in athletics but want to participate, you know, having still being able to buy some type of ASB card, like a season's pass to get to everything. You know, there's a question around, you know, drama and and other organizations. And just kind of including ASB in that because, you know, it's not, it's not super clear to me if the ASB still gets their forty-five dollar, fifty dollar funding. And then there's a fee on top of that for athletics, or if the whole athletic fee now goes, you know, the hundred dollars or whatever it is, the fifty dollars per sport or the hundred dollars per student goes all to athletics. And, you know, we still have the question up of whether it should be per sport or per student for as many sports as they participate in. So there's a couple of questions out there. So I guess I don't know how much time we have to still vet that out, you know. I'm glad that, you know, at least the students that we've heard from are are open to that. Maybe it needs to be vetted out a little bit more if if we have time. I know we want to kind of move move on, but, you know, seems like there's still some open questions.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Jason? Uh, yeah, a lot like what Ed said. We have a lot of loose ends because it's a, it is, it is a pretty important thing for a lot of athletes that can't afford it or can. When do ASB cards go for sale? When do they start to sell those for the next year?
Do you always pay for your ASB cards?
I think they start around the beginning of the school year. You have some boards to start up.
Okay.
Like as soon as the school year starts.
And just to have the information, we stopped around COVID time. And was was there a reasoning? We quit the pay to play? Was there?
Russ, you were on the board then.
What's that?
Uh, do you know why the pay to play was paused or stopped?
Okay, so we started either two thousand eight, two thousand nine in response to state budget shortfall and which then cascaded down to the individual school districts. And so we at that time, and I still am of the same opinion, that it was a temporary measure. We intended it as a temporary measure until such time that that we got through our budget crisis, and then we would eliminate it after that. And and so that's what we did. That's why we that we, I would say, maybe you remember Tim, but I I think we we had it in place probably three years, maybe a little longer.
Um, we had a little, because my kids all had to do the pay to play. So, you know, we have it been placed for a few years.
For several years, but I but I don't think as a board, we ever intended at that time to keep it as a as a pretty thing. We recognize it is too too grave a burden on too many families, even if they didn't fit into that free and reduced lunch category where there's no fee. There's a lot of people who are just above that level, but still have a hard time each month. And so I that was that would kind of weighed heavily on us, I guess, at that time.
And how's that work since everybody is eligible for lunch here? How do you meet the criteria for the for the pay to play if it's already a thing for everybody here?
Yeah, that's a good question. There is a new process. It used to be called the Family Income Survey. Now it's the Child Nutrition Eligibility, something rather. It's a form that folks need to fill out. And it would show what their household income is and whether or not, if we did have free reduced lunch, whether or not they would qualify for that. And that's how we would make the determination of whether or not they would receive a waiver of their pay to play. The benefit to that, too, is that, you know, if indeed we're able to increase the number of folks who fill out those forms, that data also helps funding for the school overall. If we show, you know, the financial need that is accurately fitting for our district, because I do believe right now, I think we're underreporting a little bit. And that's just based on the logistics and technical parts of collecting those forms back. But that is how the folks would be able to get that waiver. And I also have a sense because, Russ, I also want to acknowledge what you mentioned about those folks that might not qualify, but might not be, might be right on the cusp there that are still, you know, living within some tight means. I I think it's fair to say, you know, you know, it's not a gift to public funds, but I would imagine that our communities, I think our high school has still been supportive of folks, even if they didn't quite meet the threshold and ensuring that if a kid wanted to play, they'd help them find a way. So so we'll make sure that was clear.
Yeah, I mean, I think the survey was very helpful, showed what people want. I think what the ASB brought is some really good ideas. I know, like I said, we, it is summer, but it goes quick, but I think somehow we'll have to figure out a way to have another, so we can talk about this a little bit more to make make this decision what what's gonna do.
Yeah, I think to that point, I think what would be helpful, you know, because I'm definitely hearing some concepts for next steps about some stuff for me to look into, and I'll obviously transition this work to Jessica when she joins. But I think what would be helpful determination is if is if the board could establish like if if it's not voted on and approved by the second meeting of July, then we're just gonna hold for now. Or if it's the first meeting of August, something along those lines, having a definite timeline would be helpful, I think.
So if we didn't wait, or if we did wait until the beginning of August and if ASB cards are gonna be sold at the beginning of the school year, does that give enough time to implement anything?
Yeah.
How hard is that gonna be to put together?
I think it's, I mean, there's already fees and structure. There's already systems set up for those types of things. But I would, yeah, so I'd say probably the last date you'd want to consider would be that first August meeting if I mean, I think it'd probably be easier to do the, but if we're adopting a budget on that second July meeting, it might be a busy one. So.
Second July meeting will be budget, so maybe the first August meeting could be.
I think that would be. And like you said, there's plans there. And this this just gets out for people to understand and bring more ideas. So we just don't keep back and forth, right? This is what we have to have it by.
Yeah.
Bruno, did you?
Um, I, so I see I'm here. So for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, junior high athletics and fees are covered, but not
Yeah.
Boundary tender. That's that's all they're all gonna give.
That's what was, that was that was for as far as well as the activities bus.
Right. And that's for everybody. So that's that's everything. So that's a good thing.
So sorry, does does junior high not pay and buy an ASB card?
They do buy ASB cards, yes.
So I think this, what we're talking about wouldn't affect that, right? They would still continue to pay for that ASB card.
That's exactly right, Ed.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other question I did have, and this is from, can I talk to you?
Sure.
Jeremiah. So you said the hundred dollars, and this was just a part of it. So forty-five to the ASB fund, and then the other part goes to where?
To the pay to play.
To the pay to play?
Yes, that that would be the pay to play.
Okay. And then the other.
Um, so the the idea was that there'd be an account set up in order to, like, for all the athletics funds, they'd be directed, like, anything past forty-five would be directed to that account, and that account would be run by Mr. Lepp. And he would then use it for like officials in like payments that need to be made in order for our school to be able to play those sports like at the beginning of the year. And a separate comment was, I think for ASB cards, you have like two weeks in order to buy your card before you can't play.
And then the ASB fund, like band and choir and drama, all that all comes from there?
I think the idea was that if a drama choir or band member wanted to buy an ASB card, it'd be like a normal forty-five dollars. Or maybe it would stay the same, but like the money would go to those clubs directly instead.
And then just band and drama and all those guys, do they, would they do like a pay to play type thing too?
We we've never, we've never done that.
Because the hard, the hard part with that is that there are curriculars that are associated with those co-curricular activities. Right? So band and choir are classes we have during the day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and there's not
It is.
It's not the same equipment and other expenses like, like, you know, referees and things like that that you have with athletics. We were primarily, our primary expense is personnel, and we wouldn't use pay to play for paying employees. And so so there's a different nature of the expenditures.
And I like the idea of sponsors. And I like the idea of sponsors, um, for all kinds, sports, drama, et cetera. But, um, one thing we would have to remember is that we have to, uh, look at that policy that we have. Because we, there's certain things that can and cannot, but like, I still feel weird, but no one works on some things.
Yeah. Yep.
But.
It's a good reminder though about their policies.
That's related to what, that stuff we read about First Amendment. Yeah. Did we read it at the same time or were they related? I can't remember, but.
Don't open up any extra cans of worms.
Sorry, that was, that was the WASD guidance.
Right, yeah, but, but I, I, yeah, I, 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 I think we have, I, I would, I, I think we still have some degree of control over, uh, in terms of the express, the breadth of expression. We, um, um, I'm not gonna see a poster go up that's, that's, uh, lady with profanity say.
Nope. Right, and then, um, I like the idea of the season pass. I think that sounds like, and that, but that would be for like, like, parents and families and community members. So that, um, because then you just flash your little badge and go in there instead of having to do, and then the gate and all that stuff. So I like that. That sounded good. Um, that's a good point about cutting someone who gets cut from a sport and taking that into consideration. That's a great point. And then like, what is the cutoff for that? Like, if, you know, if they play three quarters of the season and then something happens, or if it's like behavioral.
Normally you get cut.
Well, you get, you'll get cut at the beginning.
Well, but if you like, get caught with a sticks pack in your car before a game.
You're not getting nothing back on that.
Right, well, let's see.
It just says not academically eligible, that's another contention.
Right.
I'm just giving ideas to the children. Yeah.
If I could, uh, add, we also discussed, uh, the possibility, uh, since like getting cut and like already paying for the sport, we discussed possibly making kind of like a subscription where like you would pay every month you played. It would still be like the same price, but it would be set monthly. Because I know some people struggle to get the money to pay for that. So it would be like a large portion and they could make it up every month.
Okay, I'm done.
And I, real, just to add on, Russ, it's, it's important for the people that are gonna, are watching and watch later that we are in binding conditions and coming out of it, but a lot of this is an ask just because of referee price. And they, I mean, they put a lot of time and it's deserving and stuff, but it's, it's, everything's gone up. So that's kind of, we're not, as a board, trying to find a way for greed to get money. We're, we're doing this so we can help the, the whole program out. I just think, so people understand what, what the goal is.
Yeah, I'm doing it.
Right.
And you?
Okay, so I read through all the, the comments and looked at the, the sort of visual chart that you gave us. And it's obvious that the majority of folks who responded to this survey are in support, strong support or somewhat support. Um, and so on the initial glance, like, okay, we've got enough support from the parents who've taken the time to fill out the survey to say that, yeah, they, they get behind it. But there was a strong caveat with that group in the written comments that they wanted to see support for families who couldn't afford it. And there was one particularly useful comment, um, where they had seen it done at another school, where there was the option to, um, when you were paying for your own children, to donate extra if you could afford it to help cover folks who might not be able to. Um, and that stood out to me as something worth considering if we make the decision to, to implement this. But I'll also say, after reading the comments from the opposed and strongly opposed folks, um, some of it sat with me, it, it really stuck with me. Um, and, and the, the, the two pieces that stuck with me were, this is gonna disproportionately impact kids who need sports maybe the most. Um, and second, even if we, well, actually it's three things. Second, if we put in, and this was a reoccurring comment, if we put in scholarships or ways to help families who can't afford it, some of those families may not make use of it, whether for not wanting to be on the radar for that or for maybe being stretched so thin in so many ways that that's just one more piece of paper we can't get to. Um, and the third thing that stood out to me, and this one is really less emotional, but more logic driven, and that's sort of this cost benefit analysis. And if we look at the scope of students who would be impacted by this, right? If we, we have like two hundred and fifty students who play sports approximately.
I think that's what he's.
And if, if, if fifty percent, if that's roughly what the opposed group was, that's two fifty divided by two hundred and twenty-five of our students, their family, representative are going to say, this hurts us. That's a lot of students negatively impacted by this. And what's, what's the benefit? Five to ten thousand dollars. And the folks that pointed out, you've got this huge budget and all you're gonna get from this harm is an extra five to ten thousand dollars. Is it worth it, right? So is, is the cost to our students and the goodwill of our community? And people were giving great ideas, like do an annual fundraiser and make five to ten thousand dollars. And people will feel good about it instead of nickeling and dining them and it ticks them off. You know, and so that really stuck with me, like, the cost benefit analysis. Is there, I, I know we've been wringing out the sponge in every way that we can. And I'm like, gosh, is that cost worth that relatively small amount, even if it is an impactful amount? Um, that's what I'm sitting with right now. And, and that was because of the feedback that we got, you know, I thought, okay, but they make a good point. They make a good point. Is the cost benefit analysis worth it? Is the return on the investment getting us enough to justify the drawbacks?
Hmm, yeah.
Yep.
Let me clarify for those that are watching and listening, as far as the fundraising piece goes. In, those are obviously more successful when they're run by a booster, those are five one C three, because donations to us aren't the tax deductible kind. And so therefore, you look at the, we do have an athletic booster club and they have bought things like a side by side or a paint striping machine. Um, and the, the Speedway does great work to donate to, to the, um, Athletic Booster Club. And there's also, you know, we have a great example of our FFA Booster Club and how much money they bring in. Um, just remembering that, I just, as we think about this, that that's, those fundraising functions aren't a function of the school district entity.
Thank you for, for lending it even that, because I didn't, but yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I will acknowledge again, we're, we're not following our usual protocol, but I, in, in honor of having, having you guys show up here, um, I, I want to continue to engage in conversation. Jeremiah, you had your hand up.
I just wanted to clarify something on what she was saying earlier, because, uh, it was on the, um, part of the discounts for the, for the families. Uh, while we were talking to Coach Lapp, actually, I don't know how many of them were there for it or heard about it. But, um, we had been talking to him about it and suggested that to him as well. And he said that we already have a thing for the parents and the families, that's a discount. From what he believes is two students and two adults, where it's a discount for them to where they can get into the games for free.
Oh, for like the, like a family pass, gotcha, gotcha.
I think I bought that last year.
What's that?
Yeah, I think I bought that last year for basketball season or something like that. But you, you could still have a student version of that for non-athletes who want to buy a pass or go, you know, any sports event throughout the year. You know, what, what's not, what's not clear to me is if the pay to play a hundred percent goes just for the athletes or if it's gonna be divvied up between ASB and athletics. So that's kind of outstanding question. And in my mind, that probably needs to get flushed out a little bit.
I'm, I'm glad we had, we, you know, and I think we should take, um, the time that it, you know, several meetings here to, to, um, you know, it's dollar wise, yes, it's, it's, it's one of our smaller, uh, budget items. But it has that impact on, on families and, um, um, so I think we need to be very cognizant of that and deliberative in, in our decision making on, 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 um, something of this nature. And I, I, I share a lot of your feelings, which is what I expressed in the first place, that it was something that I came to. Last time we did it, very reluctantly. It's, it's, um, um, and, and I think, uh, one other good thing with timing, we will have, um, by, with, by that timing, we, we will have approved our budget. And so we will know precisely where this, where this fits in. And, and possibly if, if we have to go one way or the other way, uh, have some other options for alternative, you know, whether it's fundraising, uh, uh, other options kind of better fleshed out, uh, given that time. Um, so, um, and I, I, I think the, the, uh, points that, that you brought up are ve- very well made. So the, my, one, one point of clarification, the, um, the proposal from Coach Lapper for the hundred dollars, so that, that would be fifty-five going to the pay to play, forty-five going to ASB, a, and, but that would be a, um, maximum, that would be a, a, a full year. So if you did multiple, i- is that correct?
Yes.
Um, so if you did two or three sports, you'd still have that same.
Done per student or per family?
Per student. And when I talked to him, he mentioned, he was still sticking with a two hundred max per household.
Right.
So if you have three kiddos that all play sports, it'll still just be the two hundred. At least that's what he and I were discussing.
So then what's different between that and what's on this?
On the memo? The memo was a per sport fee.
We were, we were gonna do fifty dollars per sport, per student.
But it's still capped.
Two hundred dollar max.
Yeah, but it's still capped at two hundred. So like, if you have four kids and they play one sport every season, they, you're only paying the two, so you're paying for one season, but you're still gonna play the rest of it.
Fifty dollars was per season, so it could have been up to, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars. For one person.
Oh, but I thought this two hundred max was for the whole year.
Was for the whole year, for the whole family. And family is determined by address. So it's, it's, you know, family or, 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 uh, uh, or residential unit.
Right.
Yeah.
So. So like, we have a blended family or whatever. It's, 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 I think the proposal or the way it's written is, is, uh, you would, you would have that, that if we had, if we kept it at two hundred, it would be two hundred per household.
Right, and that's, but per season or per year?
No, per year for the whole family. The most a family could ever pay for the whole full year.
You have four kids and they play, they all play one thing, one game in one season, then there's a two hundred, right? Could be bucks for four kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you better talk someone to plan another one, so it seems free.
That's right, yeah, at that point, yeah.
But then they can keep going. So if they did that in like, yeah, yeah. And just as a point of comparison, um, obviously the district doesn't do elementary sports. Um, and it's all run by volunteer parent associations. Um, and I pay eighty-five to a hundred per kid, per sport. Um, so if we're comparing what parents are already paying for elementary age kids out of pocket for them to play sports, this is definitely, um, much less comparative. But I also want to acknowledge that high school, high school kids have potentially more expenses associated with them than an elementary school kid, right? They're not driving, they're not eating as much, they're not, right, they're involved in anything, so.
Me too. Uh, uh, am I pronouncing your name right?
I think so.
You're trying to figure out what it is.
A lot of people go by, uh, call me a lot of things. So like, I'll just usually know what they're talking about.
Okay.
But, um, uh, it was my understanding that the forty-five dollars for the ASB card initially was not included in the two hundred dollar cap, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, I see. So then that would include this.
Would be part of the two hundred dollar cap. Or would, would be or wouldn't be?
Wouldn't would be.
It wouldn't be, that's what he's saying.
Wouldn't be.
And a few other points were brought up that it could, um, influence people to, if they wanted to just play one sport in the beginning, to continue playing throughout the year. Because they want to make, you know, the, the get the full amount they spent in the beginning. So it would increase, um, maybe activity levels during the, the seasons and.
As, as well as, um, I'm just gonna popcorn off and pin him upon it. Uh, as well as the fact that it would, it would make it a little bit easier to manage instead of having three separate payments for three separate sports. You have one payment for all the sports. That way you can take the money that's coming from that one payment and put it into one account rather than putting it into seven.
Yeah, and I, I think that brings up another important point, that our goal here is to have as much participation in, in co-curricular activities across the board as, as, as the students are willing to do. That's our goal. And, and we're not, things, barriers to that goal are, are barriers that, that concern, that concern me and, and I think concern the rest of us. So, so I think, um, and I, I, our, our participation, um, prior, prior to the pandemic and prior to just kind of general decline in participation, I remember years when we had over eighty percent of our, of our high school students involved in one or more co-curricular activity, whether it was a sports, a drama, band, any, you know, it, it, but eighty percent were doing one or more and quite a few were doing two or three. And, and, um, so that's what, that's our goal. And, and we can't lose sight of that, that side of it. And so I think the points that you bring up, Danielle, in, in, in weighing this, and I'm glad that we will take the time, look at our budget and, and continually weigh it, because I think, I think that will help us make a better decision.
I wanted to say one thing too that came up in the feedback, which makes perfect sense. I don't know that folks are clear, um, where gate fees, right? Because like when people go to watch a football game or go to watch a basketball game, some of the parents in their feedback, it sounded like they felt like they were already paying for everything for sport with that gate fee. And so I think being really clear about if we're gonna implement something like this, where those pots of money live and how they work and help people understand as much as we can that there are some constraints. We can't, we can't pay coaches out of gate fees, right? Because that goes back to ASB. And that's governed by state law, if I'm right, yes, that if the students are the ones playing and the money is generated by student activity, then the money goes back to the students, to the ASB, not to the district to pay for staff and coaches and building maintenance and all of that. And so we've got to be really clear, like we do with Capitol projects, to help people understand that, yes, we know we asked you to pay for a ticket. And so we've got to be really clear, like we do with capital projects, to help people understand that, yes, we know we asked you to pay for a ticket. But that doesn't cover referees, right?
Yeah, well.
Maybe it does.
Because contract is certain, it's that.
Okay, different, okay. See, even I am not totally clear.
So so, you know, there. Our our ath- our athletic program has lots of expenses that are outside, you know. For example, we we spent approximately a half million dollars rebuilding our football field. We had, I think last time we redid the track, we spent ninety thousand dollars for resurfacing the track. Next time it'll be more than that. Those are our capital expenses that are paid for by the the taxpayers. That that vote on capital projects levy and and the the. Educational programs levy is our primary source for co co curricular. Expenses other than the capital ones that I just mentioned. And so, you know, regarding the the eighty five per child per season. Our taxpayers are already given at the office, so to speak, because because they've, they, when you. I think, I think most taxpayers think when they are approving or or voting on a school levy. They're they're voting to support the co curricular programs. And so so I think that's part of our mix of of of, as we're weighing the various aspects here. We have to remember that, that that people have that understanding and and I think rightfully so. And that's the only, that's the only source that we can use generally, except for some gifts or or fundraising. For our athletics program is is the educational program and the capital levy. So it's. So I I'm, any other points that?
So what's the next step?
Well, I think I think we we can, we can revisit this with 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 Coach Lepa and and.
We're looking at an August, the first meeting in August vote and finalization, so.
Is what?
First meeting in August vote and finalization of either either we're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it, right?
Right.
So we need.
How, what are we doing? I would love a recap and clarity on how much money we anticipate. Because we've kind of drilled in a little bit more on, you know, we're going to limit it for certain families and S I B and here's the amount. I'd like to get a better, a firmer dollar amount of what we think it's going to raise. And then I'd like a stronger sense of what that's going to help pay for. And are those things that it's being used to pay for able or not able to be paid out of other buckets? Does that make sense? Um, how limited are we? We're making, you know, yeah, we're bringing in five to ten hundred dollars, but yeah, but we can't pay for that by cutting over here. Right, I I'd like a little bit. What's the money we're gonna bring in with more focus and what's it gonna pay for? And then that helps me and I think maybe some of the parents that are paying attention to help see. Why we can't just make the cut somewhere else, or maybe we can.
Yeah, and I I think we will have, we will have a clear fina- you know, picture of our our finances. By the first of August, clearer than we have now, you know, the beginning of my board comments. I I brought up the schedule for the little little rolling timber sale. If that happens to. To go ahead, you know, in a timely manner, that's another source of of revenue that we hadn't built into the budget so far. Because of the, because we weren't, it's not clear, so I think there's several balls in the air that financially that we can. Will have a, we can make a better decision. And I, and if you talk with your peers. More input to the board is very valuable in that decision too. I mean, you've had a chance to listen to some of the pros and cons as we see them, mull that over. And 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 provide, you know, you can either, whether you attend here or you can send an email to. To a school board at at Mount Baker dot webnet dot edu, it's on the website. And so we're always open to input. Then one further thing I wanted to do while we have, while we have ASB here is. Our board for over a year has talked about having a student representatives on the school board. They wouldn't be voting members because that's not allowed by law, but they would sit with us and be part of every discussion. To to provide a student student voice, which I think we very much need. And and so I'm putting a bug in your ear to bring, you know, to bring back also to your peers and to think about and and. If we could do that, I, if we could do that for next year, we would be. We we would be very happy, I think that would be a great thing.
Can I piggyback off of that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let me spell it to you a little bit. We had, as a student, I didn't serve on my school board, but I did serve in student rep positions and you would learn so much about school finance and management and funding. And it's something you can put on your college application, the resume, that's really, it's it's an incredible experience. Not only to represent your fellow students, but for you as the individual that gets to sit in the room with them in unparalleled learning opportunity. And it looks like you wanted to say.
Did you have something else to add?
Yeah, I was actually curious about that, like if we could have like an ASB, like a temporary ASB member or a student board member, like participate in the meetings.
They want an ASB member to be at least a temporary student rep at our meetings.
Well, there's nothing holding us back from implementing it.
You mean like these meetings or like the meeting about the the?
Probably meetings in general, since most of them will be based off of the school as a whole anyway. So we'll actively be in the conversation about things happening or if you're, know what's going on. Update the school or the students or the families who live in our areas.
Do you think there's interest among you?
And I, I'll write a note to myself, the the. There's a Logan Enders, who's back at Wausau now. Is this, one of his specialties is student representatives on school boards. And so I will contact him for some advice of of what seems to be the best way to choose. Because whether it's, whether students apply and then and then the principal or the ASB advisor. So that we we, usually there's more, two. Grades so that you would you would have one senior, but you always have an underclassman. Then because that way you get the continuity, so.
You got anything, Ed, before we move on?
Uh, no, yeah, I'd love to have a a student voice on our board, I think that would be great, great idea.
Yeah, I think we can follow up with Mr. Spock.
He's reminding there is policy and procedure about it.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
That's what we.
Welcome. Ball fifty.
Procedure.
Policy procedures, ball for group, yep.
Y'all should read that.
Rules for everything out there.
Yeah.
That's my job, I'm the hall monitor.
Otherwise, we'd just be like, come on in, everybody.
Well, I think it's, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll work it within the, within the procedures, but I, but I, I think it's, it's a goal we've had. And we've kicked around for some time and and with this strong of ASB, and this year's ASB. I think in the twenty five years I've been on the school board, it's it's the strongest I've seen in terms of engagement. On legislative issues and things of that nature. And and so we're gonna strike while the.
Yeah.
While the iron's hot.
Yeah, be a part of government in action.
Yeah. I I served as a student rep when I was in high school to our our school board and and. Also served on our capital projects committee when I was in high school for the whole school district. And got my background that I'm now applying here on capital project.
Shocking.
So can we, we set a goal as a board to try to have a student sitting with us by fall?
I think we should evaluate the policy and.
And then decide, and then decide.
Well, we, yeah, we need to have a a follow procedure that that we.
Yeah, we gotta move it on.
We'll just be as topic wise as possible. Rules of open public readings.
We gotta put it on the agenda.
Yeah, you can't discuss this if it's not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Hall monitor.
I know.
Thank you.
So that's athletics, so it's second reading and we will table it for now and and continue. We we will revisit it, future meetings, with the. Goal to make a decision by the first meeting of August. Uh, next up is Mount Baker Resolution twenty four twenty five fifteen WIAA membership.
Yeah, this is a pretty straightforward one, boilerplate language, been the same, we renew it every year since all of you all have been on the board. Yep.
And I think, I think WIAA has been, has been in existence since the nineteen twenties. So both the school boards have been approving this resolution for just about a year.
Nineteen oh five.
Nineteen oh five? So more than, yeah, more than I had used.
Anything from the WIAA rep?
Oh, I was just gonna mention there was a couple of resolutions passed by WIAA. Maybe I could take a minute. To just share those, if that's okay. One was they uh, they passed a vote to add. Girls' flag football. I don't know that'll affect us, but it was the first sport added since nineteen ninety nine, so that's kind of interesting.
Oh, flag football?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, not that Mount Baker is adding girls' flag football, I don't want to start any rumors, I'm just saying.
The ASB comes to us.
Uh, may maybe bigger schools to start with, so that was kind of interesting. And so a while back, we voted on a resolution whether or not. Uh, girls' sports should be limited to girls or include boys. And so the WI had a similar vote and that fell short by one vote of the sixty percent needed. That would have been an advisory vote, a vote similar to us, so not actually changing law, just. Just kind of an advisory on on their opinion. It's basically the same, same, same things that we voted on. So that was one vote short and then they also changed the transfer rules. So a student transfers, it used to be that they were not allowed to play varsity for one year. Now it's forty percent of the season, so I don't know if that's gonna affect us, good or bad. It's just the the rules change, so. That was where the the main things.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
You know, I think my my main point here is is. This is a necessary resolution to pass for our athletes to participate in interstic- stylistic athletics. And so I think it's always incumbent on the board to ensure that we provide those opportunities. So I recommend approval of of the resolution. So do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty four twenty five fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? None? Okay, that passes. Next up is the twenty five twenty six budget process report. This is the point is if you would like to, this is the, our operating budget. Uh, if you would like to kind of get a picture of that, you're welcome to stay.
All sets reported, it's just a fact we took out. Won't be a, but I will try to be quick.
Hi Brian.
Hello, thanks for having me.
Are you gonna share a screen?
I am. Alright. So we talked about the other four funds already and about the development of those budgets. Everything is coming together quickly but nicely. OSPI released their tools and the software is available, so I've been working to get it in there and looking as expected so far. Uh, here's a recap of the timeline that we've gone through. Our enrollment estimate was done in December, so what's going to happen in ten months from there? And we're trying to predict that future. That leaves into an analysis of enrollment and staffing analysis, verifying seniority lists intended to return, setting a fund balance target, which is driven by our binding conditions that we'll see later. Staff analysis and continued legislative advocacy. On April twenty fourth, the board approved a reduction in educational program, the legislature closed in the twenty seventh. On May twelfth, the final writ notices were issued and it was not till May twentieth that the governor signed the budget, which set the OSPI tools out late. And I've even worked to put together the budget, so. I'll walk you through first some updates on federal funding. OSPI did publish a roadmap, which they published and then updated. And currently they anticipate a cut of just over, you know, about eighty four and a half thousand dollars to Mount Baker this year. We estimate it higher than that because there's still a lot of unknowns. That's what we know for now has been reduced, but things like Title II and Title IV are entirely written out of the federal budget. And those are not included in that E four. Neither is any reductions to Medicaid and the reimbursements we get there. I don't believe it includes food service and it's not known really how being a CEP district and food service go together. So we budgeted a lot more conservatively than that and we'll go through each revenue line by line. But we've given ourselves some room in anticipation of more cuts that still may be coming. And that just goes to the the practice that we have, and it's this good practice is that if you don't know, you don't have it.
Right, yeah.
Right, so we don't know and we're budgeting conservatively. So questions on that before we go on?
Brian, I did have a question, so it's eighty, the, it's eighty four K. Uh, let's see, anticipated, but we actually budgeted a five hundred and seventeen K reduction.
That's correct.
Okay, so does that? Does that budgeted amount then change, will we adjust that to the eighty four or are we just gonna? Keep it as is and and know that, you know, our, we'll have more money than what we thought.
It's a good question, so the eighty four is what we know has already been reduced. The over five hundred thousand is what we anticipate being reduced in the future. And the federal government should pass their budget in July or August. At that point, we'll know, our budget will likely already be passed by the time that happens and if we end up with more revenue, that's wonderful. But if we plan for more revenue and we don't have it, that's a problem. Um, but if we plan for more revenue and we don't have it, that's a problem.
Cause something I'll add is the eighty-four K figure is coming from OSPI's review of the original budget submission from the president. Um, but as we've heard the feedback, there's a lot of concern about how that budget may lead to a greater deficit. So we, again, we're as conservative as possible, expecting that that cut is gonna be beyond the eighty-four K of the initial budget. That by the time it becomes adopted in July or August at the federal level, it might be steeper cuts because we know the deficit hawks have been watching that bill quite closely.
Yeah. So the eighty-four does not, does not represent programs that have already been ended. They're just, they're just a, a proposed budget from the executive. And so it's, yeah, I, I, I think the, the, uh, the five hundred and seventeen thousand is still a, a good figure to use r- running through our process. And then as we look at everything together, we can, we can, we can revisit that if need be, but I, I think, uh, I, I think it's, it's prudent, given the speed at which programs have been eliminated over the last several months.
And if the reduction is eighty-five thousand, that's great and we're ready for that. And if the reduction is five hundred thousand, not so great, but we're still ready for it. Um, and I'd much rather go the other way at this point, if we can make it work. Okay. Thank you, Ed. Good question.
Thanks.
Some general fund basics, um, mostly for, uh, you know, to recap for the board, and we've gone over it, um, and for the public that may watch this in the future or is watching it now. Um, the general fund is the operating fund for the district. It's the largest fund. It's the fund that can do anything. You can buy a bus with the general fund, but, um, the transportation vehicle fund, all you can do is buy buses. But it doesn't mean you can't buy a bus in the general fund. You can do any legal purchase with the general fund. Um, it's the only fund that can do human resources, pay payroll, which is eighty-five percent of the expense of running the district. And the money that comes in as revenue, about seventy-four percent of it comes from the state. We know they are underfunding us. So at least seventy-four percent of our budget is not sufficiently, um, funding our operations. And changes in enrollment do affect changes in the funding because it comes in an appropriate model. Here's a reminder of the other funds and what they do. Um, ASB is for, um, culture, athletics, recreation, social things. Transportation is just for the purchase of school buses, um, though there is a bill that will allow us to purchase, um, other vehicles such as passenger vans for, uh, transportation that hasn't given to effect yet, but it will. Capital projects, construction and renovation, debt service, um, we don't, we're not using right now, which is a pass through to pay bonds and, um, other non-voted debt. Some definitions, things you'll hear. I'll just put those up there and give a minute, um, anything that anybody's not familiar with. If they're watching the recording, they can pause it and read it. We don't have many visitors, um, on the online platform currently. MSOCs is one we've heard a lot about already. Um, different from headcount and FTE is, um, number of hours of enrollment or work. Alright, we've gone through it pretty quick. Are there questions before we dive into more of it? Nope? Good. Awesome. Um, a couple of reminders. This is a thought that I shared nearly two years ago with, um, this group here, that we are in a pressurized environment. People do strange things and we are leaders and the tone that we set, sets the tone for the community. So we should give empathy when possible, give grace when possible. Um, and when it's not, um, seek to listen and learn.
Still valid.
Yep. I pulled this from twenty twenty-three and it is still valid too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Brian.
Of course. Uh, and a note that the following is a presentation of the draft budget in draft form until it gets approved by the board. Later on. Okay, so diving right in. There's kind of our over, under revenue expenditure. And a total change is an increase to the fund balance of just under a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That again is pretty conservative, um, with the revenue estimate. It's also really tight on the expenditures. Um, if you look at our MSOC costs, we know that everything's getting more expensive, but we're hoping to spend about the same or less. And that's just a reality that we're going to have to live in with. Here's a fund balance projection. Um, you'll note that we are anticipating ending the year fairly strong. Um, that's a totally reasonable estimate to think about. That's where we're going to be. Even though we were below zero in February, you've all seen that pattern of how it drops and it will drop again in June and we may need to push another loan from the capital projects fund in June, but then it will recover. Um, if you think about just our safety net allocation alone, we have, uh, believe over seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, coming in for safety net. And that comes in. Don't quote me on that figure, but I believe that's what it is with community impact. If we get it all, the high needs individuals and community impact. Um, that comes in on the very last day of our fiscal year. So we will be short till the end. Um, but we will, I mean, that would be more than half of the fund balance.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, um, things look bad. They will look bad next time I report to you. Um, but know that we will recover and we anticipate ending around one point two million dollars. And, oh, I apologize. Binding condition number four, and I'm sorry you can't see that all together, the budgeted year-end general fund balance in the F one ninety-five, which is the budget document adopted by this board on August first, twenty twenty-five, um, must have a fund balance that is greater to or equal to four percent, sorry, greater than or equal to four percent of the total general fund expenditures. Current best estimate is one point three million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So with that ending fund balance and this anticipated change, we will meet that binding condition.
Yes, it would be thirty thousand above that.
Sort of. It depends on how you measure and I'm pretty sure I can get OSPI to measure it the way that I want it to. Um, our, our board policy says it's four, it's, it should be five percent of expenditures for the previous year. And if you measure it like that, it's about one point three two million.
Mm-hmm.
The binding condition says that it doesn't reference the previous year. It just says four percent to the general funded budgeted expenditures. Well, it just said general fund expenditures. It doesn't say budgeted or last year. So if you go by this year, we won't quite make it in the budget. So we have to get OSPI to agree to say that matches the policy. It's gonna be four percent. They've been good partners. That'll be fine. Um, all that to say is it's close, but we're gonna make it. Questions on the fund balance?
Yeah, I guess I'm unclear. Are you saying we'll, we could be out of binding conditions going into next school year?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Um, because there is one last binding condition, number five, that says in the fall of twenty twenty-six, we have to produce an end of year report for twenty-five or for, yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, and that's the F one ninety-six, the year-end report that they gets done and shows what the actual finances were in that year compared to the budget. And that document has to show that we actually did what we budgeted for. And that's the final binding condition. So that will be in October twenty twenty-six.
October of twenty twenty-six. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
But binding condition number four says we budget to get there. And then binding condition number five says we prove what we stuck to the budget.
Gotcha.
There are one, one potential adjustment if, if we're for ten thousand up, ten thousand down, or ten thousand down, is, is that five hundred and seventeen thousand figure for federal cuts? We can reduce it to five oh seven.
Correct. Yep. So we'll make binding condition number four. Um, and we do meet with OSPI before the budget gets adopted. So if we do need to make some tweaks and say we're gonna be a little less conservative with that federal figure.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I don't wanna go down to the eighty-four, but if we're ten thousand this way, ten thousand that way.
Yep. Yes. So we can get to binding condition number four. And I do believe that it's accurate and that will lead, if we stick to the budget, if we stick to the budget, will lead to us getting to that year-end report that shows we did, will be budgeted and we are ready to exit binding condition. At four percent. We still need to get to five percent to meet board policy and five percent is still not much.
Sorry. Brian, just, just so I understand, the, the meeting, the four percent is at the end of this year? That's the one point two million? Or are you talking about the end of next year, the one point three three million?
Binding condition number four says that we pass a budget next month that says that by the end of the next school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, we will be at one point three or above.
I see. Okay.
And then we've got to prove it, that it actually happened in the fall after that, when everything finally closed. Yep.
Got it.
Yes, stand down.
I like to be prepared for the worst case scenario, at least mentally. So what if we budget and we don't meet that budget? Does that make sense? And you're gone.
Yep, you'll be fine.
But does OSPI allow us to?
They have so far.
Okay.
They have changed, they, so let me, let me, with a caveat. Based on our transparency and partnership with them and the EST and based on the progress we have made towards the original goals they set. They have adjusted the goals so that we don't need more financial oversight because we have been continuing to make good progress. That's why we have the extra time. That's why they adjusted it to four percent from five percent. Um, we were able to show them, we're going to do all that we can. But if we do that, it's going to be very impactful for our students. If you save four percent and give us an extra year, we're still going to do all of that. And they've gone with it so far.
Okay.
So if we're close, but don't quite make it, I, well, it'll be their determination whether we need financial oversight or not. But as long as we continue to make good progress, I don't believe that they will make that determination.
That's helpful. And I'm not anticipating that that will be an issue, but I always like to just know.
Mm-hmm.
If some unforeseen thing shows up and it goes sideways.
Yes. We've made good progress.
Right.
And in the letters that they've written about our binding conditions, you can see that in the tone and in their recap, they've been very clear about Mount Baker is doing the right work. They're making good progress and we have no concerns about them exiting binding conditions.
Well, and the other thing by building in can, where we need to make assumptions, conservative assumptions, were, were much more likely to end up the year in the right place than if we had narrowed those down.
Correct.
How, how and when does the, um, loan from Capital Projects get paid back?
That was paid back in the middle of May, May fifteenth. We paid off the loan from Capital Projects. And later this month, we made another.
But that should be fairly short.
It will be short.
Duration.
Correct.
Sorry, we, we already paid it back, back on May fifteenth or next May fifteenth?
On, on May fifteenth, we paid off in full with interest our loan from the Capital Projects to the general fund. We currently do not have a loan on the books.
Okay, great. And, and we're not anticipating needing.
Well, what Brian has just mentioned now is something I shared with you in your board update that OSPI has come out and said that they are struggling with making apportionment. Um, so if indeed they are struggling enough with apportionment, um, later this summer, that will impact our cash flow, which at that point, um, the board has already approved and passed the resolution to move the loan and Brian has worked closely with the treasurer's office to move it the moment we need it. Um, but we will wait and see what OSPI's apportionment is. Uh, but they've given us fair warning that it will be short. Uh, they did clarify that, that, that the year-long apportionment won't be an issue, but they're having a tight time too. Um, we're gonna get all the money from them, but it just might be at the tail end rather than as uncool as it was gonna be to begin with.
In our shortest month, they're reducing our apportionment by ten percent.
Yeah.
Well, at least, yeah, but, but having the ability to go back to the Capital Project.
Correct. We're ready.
But not every district has that though.
Correct. But we do.
Well, I, I always, you know, I, I, I promote the use of Capital Projects levy for other school districts because, because of so many burdens we're facing.
So the ten percent short, but they will make that up in the following months, not just permanently ten percent.
No, because in July, their fiscal year ends and they start the new fiscal year. So whether or not they'll be short next June, who knows? But they'll give us the rest of our money for our fiscal year on the first month of their fiscal.
So ten percent, is that about two hundred thousand dollars?
Well, I'd have to go back. It's gonna be ten percent.
Of what they would have grown.
Yeah. Well, ten percent of six percent of our apportionment, our apportionment, I'm anticipating being around a million. So yeah, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars shorter than we expected.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm assuming you all have moved Jessica in on those dates in that timeline because that will be in transition during this time.
Yeah, we get the, she gets the same updates, um, that we get from OSPI. I mean, we talked to her and actually she's listening right now. So hi, Jessica.
I spoke to her today as well.
Thank you.
Yes. And as far as the transition goes, you know, I, I do anticipate to work, like I said, to, I mean, certainly we'll be doing all of this because this is well within my contract. But then after that contract, I will still help the board get the budget done and on the books and ready, have somebody else transition into this kind of management and monitoring. So. Okay. More questions on this slide? Alright.
Just the product of a lot of hard work.
Yeah, so that's okay. That's the work, right? So, um, if you recall this from previous budget adoptions, um, these numbers on the side are kind of the series that look, um, dictate everything in the one thousand series is local funding that comes through taxes. So here's the timber excise tax and the levy that we intend to collect. You'll notice the levy amount going down a little bit. That's because driven, limited by enrollment and our enrollment's gone down a little bit. Um, the two thousand series is, um, local support that is not taxable or sorry, not, not tax generated. So, um, you know, somebody rents some of our facilities or gives a gift or donation, our investment earnings is here. Um, these are fairly conservative because we don't really know how much people are gonna donate. I mean, we know we've got thirty thousand coming in from the trust. Um, we typically have some more, so that's fifty thousand our investment earnings, even after we pay back all of the investments that came from the money from the loan from Capital is more than double that this year already. So small amounts, but conservative there. Um, state apportionment, these are state general funds. Um, and that's the tool that OSPI finally pushed out after, um, the governor signed the budget. They got it together, say what's in the budget and then based on enrollment and an input I do to that, it kicks out this number. If that's the enrollment, then this is what we'll get. Um, there are some factors there as far as what the enrollment will be. Also, if ironically, we get an influx of more kindergarteners because we kept the staff in that K through three class size protected. Um, so if we get about the same or fewer kindergarteners coming in, then that ratio will get closer to seventeen and we were within one staff FTE anyway. Um, but if we get more kindergarteners coming in, we will be penalized because that staff to student ratio won't get farther from seventeen. So, um, some variables, but again, we make our best guess.
So you're putting zero on state for us doing the same.
Correct. Still less than fourteen thousand for the year. And we very conservatively estimated a hundred and fifty thousand. So we're not up to ten percent of what we guessed. Yeah. Big change for Mount Baker. Um, and if you look at, I mean, that plus the six percent drop in all of these, all of these funds went down six percent over the last two years because the legislature decided so. Um, and the reduction in federal funding and the drop in enrollment, it's all added up. Uh, we are anticipating about eighty thousand dollars in transportation safety net. Again, that allocation has gone down. The first year we got about two hundred and forty thousand from it. Last, this year we got about a hundred and twenty thousand from it. So we're anticipating less. And that's because of the way they give it out. They give out thirteen million and then everybody who asks for some gets something. And the more districts are in trouble, the more we'll be asking and so the less we'll get.
And everyone's costs are going up, but the thirteen million staying the same.
Correct. For the next bienniums, the next two years, won't change. Um, Impact Aid, this is money that we get in relation to tribal held federal lands on our, um, in our school district that are not taxed. Um, this is half of our allocation and the money has been allocated in full. However, even in good times, there's an office of about twenty-five people who do all of this allocation and, and getting it out for the entire nation. And they're part of the Department of Education, which had been cut. So we may have the money, but it may not be allocated ever.
May not actually do the paperwork.
Correct. So it typically comes in two installments, one in the fall, one in, um, early. Correct, so it typically comes in two installments, one in the fall, one in early spring, and then. If there's anything left over after they get everybody's first two installments done, they give out what's left. So this year, we've already got what is left, and they've got all three payments in for this year, we gotta pull them out, but. It's very likely that we will only get half of any of that money, just because there's. Five people in the office and the twenty-five. And don't put me on those numbers, I just know that they've been going through reductions. And even in good times, this funding can be delayed just with complications for the allocation model. The rest, if you look at the dark blue there, those are our federal funds. So Perkins, the allocation is not out yet, this year it was less than last year, so this is less than. This year. Spent supplemental is IDEA funding, that's the same as this year, we're not anticipating an increase, but there weren't any changes to IDEA. All of our title revenue is reduced by fifteen percent, and that's part of how we get to that. Conservative estimate that we got to was just, okay, it's fifteen less across the board. And then food services, because they're tied into Medicaid and Medicare and supplemental nutrition. That's a pretty significant reduction, that's down about forty, thirty-five to forty percent from this current year. Partly because it's a wild card and partly because we know that that's already something that has been. Targeted for reductions by the federal government. Indian education is a grant that we know the funding amount for and Medicaid reimbursement. Is kind of a wild card, if, if Medicaid is significantly reduced, then that number might be reduced, but. It's reimbursement for certain services for students that need forbidden therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy. Medicaid reimbursable services. I'm going quick, stop me if there are questions. Some other community services and E-rate are. You know, if this, this again could be. Rentals and partnerships that we get in with other community organizations, we get some. From the county, we have a grant interlocal that's kind of helping fund the construction for the temporary and permanent. Fund, sorry, site for the school-based health center, so this is in relation to that. Interlocal, E-rate is in support of rural connectivity. This is purely a line item of capacity. So if we get more revenue, we can collect it without having to pass a new budget, it is matched, there is a million dollar match in expenditures. So it's, it's there in case we need it, so if we go over budget in either revenues or expenditures, we don't have to go through the whole process of. Advertising and re-adopting a new budget. This hundred and forty-seven here is for a community. Health grant from the Watkins County. And this grant could actually go up to, I believe, about two hundred and four thousand. However, it needs to be tied to expenditures and currently our expenditures for that are only this amount, so.
So this mental health is, is the one that's derived from the small county sales tax.
I believe so.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So, yeah, okay, so that's been slowly growing, we started out at about ninety thousand years ago, so.
Yep, and there's a supplemental contract that may go away, and then a contract that will continue, supplemental contract is for. This current year and next year, and then it's anticipated that that will go away. But again, if that number goes up, and it could. There'll be a matching expenditure that goes up, so right now this matches the expenditure, and if they move, they move together. Transfers from Capital of five hundred thousand, total revenue at just over, just, just under thirty-four point four million dollars. Okay, I'm moving fast, I'm gonna keep moving, stop me if there's.
Brian, why are some in light blue and dark blue is, what's the?
I put all of our federal funding here in dark blue.
Okay.
I did not differentiate between states and other funds. Because these, the federal funding is the one that's still unknown.
Okay.
The rest of it is, is pretty well-known or pretty minimal, right? Do we know that we'll get? One thousand dollars in fines and damages, no, but probably, just hoping not, but usually be more than that.
And, and the million, the million dollars in governmental, uh, what do you call it, governmental agencies, that is if we need it?
Or? Just, it, it just in case we get it, so if, if a Gates Foundation grant for half a million dollars comes, comes up and we get it. And we don't have this in there, then we have to recreate a new budget with that amount in it, we have to advertise it for two weeks, we have to have another public hearing. And have another board adoption and push a budget adjustment to OSPI before we receive any of the funds.
I see, okay, so we don't, we don't act, we're not actually getting that money, we just wanna be prepared.
Correct, and there's a matching expense, so there's an expense for a million dollars, there's the same exact thing on the expenditure side.
I see, okay.
Yes, exactly. So it balances, and it's funny money, but it's, you know. Yep, and it's standard common practice.
Okay.
Okay.
I was hoping to do a hearing every time.
Yeah. So there's a, just a breakdown of the funding. Sorry, I'll scroll down so you can see the tags. So you see how much of it comes from the state is the gray and the yellow combined? The other big chunks, the blue is federal, light blue, sorry, the dark blue is, is the levy. And other local things. Okay. We'll break it down a different way. Oops, sorry, that's into expenditure, questions on revenue before I go on.
And what, what, what were the recent changes to revenue? It seemed like the state was moving more towards local levies. To fund education versus. You know. The, the state funding side of it, is that, did that change at all? Do we kind of know what they're doing there?
Not for us, well, not yet, at least, so you're correct that the state did change the limits. To levy collection, which are based on a per pupil. For us, it's based on, on how many kids we have, they've changed those limits, so that if we wanted to. We could go out for a supplemental levy and ask the voters to pass another levy based on the increase that is. Allowed by, by the state now, so there's a new bill that would take effect that would allow us to collect more. But we budgeted, you know, with a little bit of extra, but not a lot. Because we didn't want to try to pass a levy that was significantly more than we'd be able to collect anyway. So it doesn't really make a difference to us unless we go out for a supplemental levy.
Okay, I mean, not that I would wanna do that, but I am kind of curious what that dollar value would, would be worth.
Okay, I can look into that about what we could run for a supplemental levy.
Okay.
Okay. So expenditures will break down in a couple of different ways. This is, well, certificated salary, classified salary, benefits, supplies and operating costs. Contracted services and capital outlay, this is the way that it gets broken down in the budget documents, if you look at the F one ninety-five. You'll see this breakdown, they again have numbers, it's. Two thousand for cert salary, three thousand for classified salary, four thousand for benefits, five thousand for M-SOCs. Seven thousand, there is no six thousand, seven thousand for capital, oh, sorry, contracted services, and then a little bit of capital outlay. So you see the breakdown. Is salary heavy, which we know, we're in the people business, that's correct, it should be salary heavy. Kids need people, not things, well, kids need some things, but we all need people more. We'll look at it another way. This breaks down the staffing categories more specifically, but lumps all of our M-SOCs together. So it's not broken down between contracted services and supplies. But it's a different way of looking at. How the salary breaks down.
Yeah, I, I think it's interesting, right, we were talking the discussion about this five to ten thousand dollars for the W, you know, for. Or not WA, but for. Sports, and this kind of shows where the funding goes. And why it's so tight, because a lot of these are, you know, under contracts. We just don't have a lot of legal room with.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And there's just a very simple salary to cost, and if you're noticing. That the total here is a million dollars less, that's because the capacity is removed, because the capacity lives in the M-SOCs. So to get a truer snapshot of what the actual cost of what we really expect in expenditures from. Stuff and services and salaries is eighty-five percent salaries, fifteen percent to M-SOCs. But I would also point out that a lot of those M-SOCs are contracts that are people, I guess. Yep. So this is correct, but it also would be correct if we were to. Go back to this first one. The actual supplies is one point four million dollars. So we would say. That would also be correct. With contracts that are related to people. So.
Right.
Yeah. But this is. That breakdown.
Can you give us, and anybody who might watch this in the future who's watching it now, just a sense of what that typical ratio looks like? This isn't just a Mount Baker. Heavy on the people percentage.
Yes, so this is typical now. It's not typical pre-McLeary. Yes, pre-McLeary, there was more capacity for supplies and operating, those things include our utilities. Our insurance. Some fixed costs that are just about, you know, keeping the lights on. That we have to spend, and those are all underfunded.
So you're saying that in, in, in the past, the salary total percentage was higher? Because I've seen school budgets lower, lower.
More like eighty-one percent or so.
I've seen school budgets where the people side is as high as eighty-nine.
Correct.
Right, and that that's not.
Yep.
Totally out there.
And I think that's a difference between rural and urban districts. Whereas we operate three separate elementary schools, a junior high and a high school. If a more urban district can be more. Just have a different facilities model, which we can't do because we're rural and spread out. Yep, so that's probably the biggest difference between what's eighty-five and eighty-nine. But I do wanna point out that historically, that percent of actual operating costs was. More because there are more operating costs, and it was the McLeary lawsuit and fix related to that that really upped our staff cost. And our operating cost remained fixed with inflation. Correct. Okay, one more for you. Historical analysis of revenue and expenditure. Try to get to where you can see the whole thing, there you go. So revenue is blue, expenditures, the orange is reddish. I tried to make it green, but the graph is defaults to having blue, and I couldn't get a graph with a green at the beginning, so, sorry. But the difference is in green, whether it's up or down. And then the projection for the budget as is drafted here. So you'll see there was a couple of years. Where we overspent our revenues. And that led to us having to make some reductions, and. Twenty-four, twenty-five was a mostly balanced budget, and twenty-five, twenty-six has a pretty moderate. Increase to it, and if you look at our fund balance and you wonder, well, how if we're only, you know. Budgeting to have this much more, well, this year, frankly, we transferred a lot more than we anticipated. So it's the transfers from Capital related to expenses that are legally allowed in the Capital Fund that were previously unbudgeted for. And safety net is also a big one.
Yeah, so.
Safety net is a big one, yeah. So good work to Mister, uh, sorry, to Ian, our director of special services for, who's working on that.
Right, but Brian, you said before that the, the loans were paid back, so that money is moved back, right, from our.
Yes, but we, we've had additional higher than anticipated transfers from Capital to the general fund. That are related to eligible expenses from the general fund that could be from Capital. So we transfer the money from Capital to general after the expenditures remain.
Okay.
And, and that's a, that's a separate transfer than the loans.
Correct.
I see.
So the loans are, are off on the side, but the, we did five hundred thousand?
Last year, yep.
This last year, and, and I think the most we've done before was maybe four hundred.
Okay.
And that was double up, the year that we did four hundred was my first year here, and that was related to two years.
Oh, two year.
Yep, yeah. But as our technological infrastructure has grown, there are more expenses that can be put to that. Because our technological infrastructure, like our wifi, our TVs, our Zoom license. Skyward, our management systems, those can all be part of our technological infrastructure and therefore classify as capital. So through COVID, we really grew that a lot.
Yeah, just, I guess, I'm, I'm just having trouble following the idea that we were. You know, three years negative, almost three million dollars, we're now positive forty K, next year one twenty-nine. And we're gonna end up one point three million in our fund balance, I just. I'm having trouble following that.
Yeah, it's, so we're, we're gonna do better this year than we did. And if you look back to the fund balance, so this, this is change in fund balance, so let's go back to the second slide here. That shows the actual fund balance. Even though we were budgeted negative, we only ever got to a low at year end of nine hundred and forty-one. So then we make a moderate gain this year, and an even more modest gain. Next year, and that's how we get there. Cause Ed, if you look at like eighteen, nineteen, right there where it's three point one. You think our budget was around thirty-one million back then, perhaps maybe a little more, that's almost a ten percent fund balance at that point. That's how we're able to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I see, that makes sense.
Yep, yep, so. So if you're looking back at this, this is just meant to show kind of a historical analysis of what our budget has been over time. Where we've had more revenue than expenditure, where we've had more expenditure than revenue, and where we're coming back to now.
I just wanna point out too, like if you, if you only looked at this slide, you might misunderstand and say, well, look, you got less. You're getting more money now than you did X number of years ago, but there's not as much of a gap between what you're spending. And what you're getting, even though you're getting four million more than you did in twenty seventeen. But if we could lay a map of inflation over the top of this, I think that that would help round out that picture. Right, that, that's part of what's going on here, it's not that, that we're just getting more, so we're spending more, it's, it's costing more.
Yeah, but you do also see in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had over thirty-five million dollars in revenue.
Yeah.
Sorry, over thirty-four million dollars in revenue, and then we went down to, you know, closer to thirty-three, under, under thirty-three.
Yeah.
So we're only now starting to recover, because there were two years, again, with, with the reduction we talked about earlier. State taking away six percent, timber money going away, SR money going away.
Yeah.
All of those things, we, we did have a period of getting less revenue.
Yeah.
All right. So there's not, I, I mean, in better times, when there's more money, there's more of a decision-making process. Sorry, this just kind of is what it is, but that's the update of the development of the budget. Anybody has any other ideas, I'm open, but this just kind of is what it is.
Very clear presentation.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, anyway, I think the, the graph showing the decline. In the fund balance over, over a period of years is, is. Something that we, it's, it's a very good lesson.
Yeah.
And so each name was over ten percent, because it was twenty-nine million dollar budget that year, in eighteen, nineteen, with three point one million.
Yeah.
We had a couple of hard years, man, got a couple more ahead.
Other questions or comments here?
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, of course, so I will continue to put this budget that we talked about here today together, unless I hear otherwise. All right?
Thanks, Brian.
Of course.
So um, that's, that's the um, the report. So next up, meeting schedule, um, who's going on the wood store tomorrow? So we do have a forum and, and Pammy did post and, and do uh, so it's, so it is an official school board function.
It'll be there, take minutes.
Um, yeah.
You, you probably saw arrive about eight-thirty at the blog show browser. And then June seventeenth, Washington State Otters exit conference. I did respond saying that I would participate in that. Uh, if there's, if there's one more board member who wants to participate, then we can do it without announcing that as a meeting.
I think I did it last year.
I've done it like two times before that, so if somebody else wants to do it.
I'm not available, so.
June seventeenth?
June seventeenth, uh, prime.
What was that, Brian?
It was in the morning.
Oh.
Eleven thirty?
Twelve-ish?
What was it?
Oh, yeah, it was eleven, I think.
Eleven and twelve-ish.
I can do it.
Yeah, it is eleven, twelve.
Yeah.
And Jessica will be in attendance, I will not be.
I can, I can hear us.
So J, J C, you're gonna do it? Okay, yeah, so the, and then you saw it's online.
Yep.
I'm, I'm away next week.
So if, if, if you respond to Seth, Sasha and then get the link, if, I don't recall that the link was on there, but.
No, it wasn't, I don't.
Yeah, so, so uh, tell her that she will, or respond by email to her and she can send you the link also. So that's, it brings everything but executive session. Actually, so we're gonna have, because we've got set up here, can you?
Why don't you just, why don't you just call me on a FaceTime?
Yeah, okay, let's do that. Well, and then we don't have to deal with this. Okay, and so we're, we will recess for executive session. The executive session is non-public, um, and it should take about.
Twenty minutes.
About twenty minutes. Uh, we will reconvene, but no decisions are made. So for all practical purposes, meeting is over for everyone but the board. Thank you so much for your attendance.
You're my neighbor.
I know that.
Thank you for coming, everybody.
Emily told me that she would, she would be coming, but she had to get her, she has to get her girls to bed by sixteen P M.
I think she zoomed in at one.
She did, she was online.
Okay.
Okay, take it out, they're gonna zoom you, okay? I'm gonna pause you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Uh, do we need to sign any?